Threat of COVID-19, the city council will be meeting in person, but limiting... The...put my glasses on. Sorry. Limiting the in-person attendance in any one room as outlined by the Centers for Disease Control. The meeting will also be held via virtual meeting pursuant to Governor DeSantis's executive order issued on March 20th, 2020. Local government bodies may utilize communication media technology such as telephonic and videoconferencing as provided in Section Florida statutes. The order was extended by Order Number 202046. As mayor pursuant to the authority granted to me by the city charter, I declared a public emergency on March 15th, 2020, in response to COVID-19. Furthermore, pursuant to those powers and the governor's executive order, I suspended all city requirements that require a physical quorum to be present to conduct this meeting and authorized that this meeting be conducted as a hybrid communications media technology under the city's State of Emergency Proclamation for virtual meetings executed on April 3rd, 2020. Access to this meeting is also being provided via live stream on the city's website and as described below. This meeting will be audio recorded as usual. In accordance with the Americans of Disability Act, persons needed special accommodation for this proceeding should have contacted the city clerk by Monday, October 20...or October 19th, 2020, by noon. Notice that this meeting was going to be held as a hybrid meeting by communications media technology and with limited in-person attendance was posted on the city's website at least five days ago, October 15th, 2020. Access to this meeting is being provided via live stream on the city's website at www.palmcoastgov.com and by calling 386-223-1690. Should you need technical assistance, please call at 386-986-2391. Today is October 20th, 2020. It is 9:00 a.m. Please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Brancuino.
Yep.
Councilmember Nett.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comments on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin. We will start with anyone that is in chambers that wants to make a public comment. And then we will go to our phone call hybrid opportunity for our members. Any member of the public wish to make public comment, please do so at this time.
I'm Tammy Sanner. I'm with the Family Life Center. And I just want to thank you all for proclaiming...
We're gonna...are you here for the proclamation?
I am, but I do have another bit of information to share.
Okay, perfect.
Just thank you all for doing the proclamation today and to invite you all to our candlelight vigil this Friday here at Town Center at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Scene nine will close the physical portion of our public comments. Anyone who wish to make comments over the phone, please call at 386-223-1690. Okay, thank you Doug. We will close public comment and we'll duly note that event also and share that with our residents. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of the Minutes of the City Council, October 6th, 2020 Business Meeting, October 13th, 2020 Workshop. Do I have a motion?
Move, approve, and submit.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Aye.
Councilmember Brancuino.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff.
Yes.
Councilmember Nett.
Yes.
Mayor Holland.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Sorry Bob, I almost forgot that you were here. It's good to see you.
Just lurking in from Bravard, North Carolina, so...
Now we will hear the proclamations. We were asked everyone that's going to be receiving the proclamation for Diabetes Day Awareness to please come up to the podium. Councilmember Nett will be presenting.
Whereas the American Diabetes Association estimates that nearly 34 million people in the United States are affected with or affected by diabetes and another 88 million are still at risk for developing pre-diabetes. And whereas having diabetes elevates the risk of heart disease, amputation, kidney failure, and blindness causing serious hardship for families across not only our county, but also our state and our nation. And whereas diabetes screening and self-management education will help individuals in the recognition of the symptoms of diabetes and provide an opportunity to follow suggestions for a healthy quality lifestyle. And whereas the International Diabetes Federation has established November 14th, 2020, as World Diabetes Day to educate citizens on a way to predict if someone is at risk for diabetes, to help recognize the symptoms of diabetes, and to follow suggestions for living a quality lifestyle while they endure the affliction. And whereas the city of Palm Coast and Advent Health Palm Coast together recognize that the growing number of diabetics in our community makes a strong case for voting more resources to helping to find a cure, provide screenings, education, and support in the required lifestyle changes. And whereas Advent Health Foundation Palm Coast has formed the Beat Diabetes Alliance, the alliance represents the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County Schools, Flagler County Health Department, Flagler County Free Clinic, many corporate and private citizens that are all dedicated to beating diabetes. And whereas the alliance will kick off November diabetes awareness efforts in Palm Coast by flying the alliance flag, distributing diabetes resource bags, lighting up the town blue, and a logo campaign throughout Flagler County to continue efforts to raise awareness and educate our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council that November 14th, 2020 is World Diabetes Day and November 2020 is Diabetes Awareness Month in Palm Coast to increase community awareness of the risk factors and the symptoms related to diabetes in order to improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will seek medical attention to avoid the devastating complications of the disease. Adopted this 20th day of October, 2020, signed Melissa Holland, Mayor.
And anyone that would like to say a few words, please do so at this time.
I always say a few words, so I will gladly pass the mic on to others. But I'm Laura Gilvery. I work for Intracoastal Bank and I volunteer for the Advent Health Foundation. As most people know, this is inspired by John Gilvery, who is type 1 diabetic. And I will hand the mic over to him, so he can say a few words. But we appreciate the partnership with the city of Palm Coast. It is such an important part of our community with over 14% of our population battling this disease every day. They are everyday heroes to combat the complications from this, especially given the current environment with COVID-19. This is a severe underlying condition, so it is incredibly important that we together all give them whatever resources they need to live the healthiest lifestyle that they can. That's it.
Yeah.
Good morning. I'm John Gilvery and I just wanted to say thank you to the city. Once again, you've come alongside and partnered with the Diabetes Alliance. It is an important thing in our community and it's important to me. I've been a type 1 diabetic for 35 years now and there's nothing worse than the downside of it. Bringing awareness to it, allowing our citizens maybe who don't know that they have it to find out they have it before they have a complication is one of the biggest things that we're trying to do. We're trying to get people out there to exercise, understand how to treat themselves, and make everything better. So with that, I want to introduce the Health Department. They're huge as well. A big thank you again, looking forward to the November 14th event with the city and the mayor. And again, we thank you so much for your help.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Phillips and I'm the program coordinator for our diabetes prevention program at the Health Department along with Alana Shawah, who's our dietitian, who does the diabetes self-management education. With the Health Department, we're passionate about spreading prevention and education for those with diabetes. So I just wanted to thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you. Wendy Flock John Subers with Advent Health Palm Coast Foundation. Again, thank you for allowing, giving us this opportunity. When the Health Department, the Flagler County Free Clinic got very involved, and the Diabetes Alliance, the bar was raised that those are the folks that are really on the ground, touching the patients, and the support that we can provide them to help educate is truly amazing. We do have a small event planned for World Diabetes Day, which is Saturday, November 14th. Mayor, you'll be out there. We'll be right here on this property around. It's all about education and exercise. We will have three partners, Empower Fitness and Hot Yoga, to do 20-minute exercises and walk around the park. So it's an hour, hour and a half event to come out, celebrate, and expose diabetes awareness and get some exercise and promote that in the city of Palm Coast, which we do a lot with. So it really fits well. Look forward to seeing you, Mayor. And Councilman Clufus, I know you are...you're reining our pink army and...
I got it. Count me in.
...or the pink parade, so we're continuing on. So Mayor Nett will see you there. So again, thank you all very much for the exposure again, allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
And thank you. You know, this is another true example of when you collaborate for a common goal, to help others in the community. It demonstrates the success of the program. So really want to thank Laura. I know you were a big champion of this right from the beginning. The example of John, you know, recognizing the severity of this illness and knowing that there are things that we can do to prevent it. Health and Wellness and Advent Hospital System and the Foundation really, I know, is a great promoter of that. So I think of nothing more than having the data from the Health Department, the advocacy from the community, the partnership. Commissioner Beulheimer from Flagler Beach, lighting up Blue, really is really important for us to recognize this as a community. So thanks to each and every one of you who continues to make a significant impact in our community for our residents' well-being. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a Proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I would ask that everyone who's receiving the proclamation to come up to the podium. And Councilmember Brancuino will be going down and reading the proclamation.
Morning. Proclamation. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security and most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, their home is tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas, family violence is a crime that transcends race, religions, ethnicity, and economic stature. And one of its greatest tragedies, its effect in our children. And whereas, an estimated 4.8 million cases of domestic violence occur each year and at its most tragic level, kills an average of more than three women every day nationally. And whereas the Family Life Center and only certified Domestic Violence Emergency Shelter and Sexual Assault in Flagler County served 1,092 victims in the past year. And whereas, each October, the formal recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month allows the community to acknowledge and show their support for the victims and this horrific crime. And whereas, the Flagler County Awareness Alliance comprised the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, Victim Advocate, the Flagler Beach Police Department, Victim Advocate to the State Attorney's Office, and the Seventh Judicial Court Circuit, and the Family Life Center. And the Flagler County Sheriff Domestic Violence Summit membership are committed to confront this crisis and are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts and domestic violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Palm Coast Mayor and the city council to hereby designate October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. hereby designate October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens of Palm Coast to become part of the community in response to end domestic violence and to send the message to this crime will not be tolerated in our community. As we spread awareness of domestic violence in our community during the month of October, we recognize that it takes an entire community to stand together and make the difference. Together, we can break the cycle and impact the lives of future generations. Signed, this twentieth day of October, two thousand and twenty, by the City of Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland and attached by Virginia Smith, City Clerk.
The sheriff and confederate. Just let me say that this, that would be beautiful if we never had. To show this to anybody. And no reason, but domestic violence.
So I think, Councilman, that you just summed it up, even, especially with the emotion, because that's what it does to our family units in our community. But I just want to invite everyone on October twenty-first at ten a.m., all of our community partners on our Domestic Violence Initiative will be holding a Zoom summit for an update on domestic violence. We've done great in this community over the last three years, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So you can come on Zoom. The information will be on the Sheriff's Office website and our Facebook page, ten a.m. on October twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilman? I'm Candace Wilkie, the Outreach Coordinator at the Family Life Center. We want to thank you so much for proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the month of October and your continued support of our agency. As you said, it's so crucial. Even through the pandemic, when many, and everything was shut down, we still were providing services and we're still working twenty-four hours a day, and we served over one thousand survivors and housed over five hundred individuals this past year. So your continued support of our agency is crucial, and we really do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gary Perkins. I'm the Community Relations Advocate for the Family Life Center, and I want to thank the City of Palm Coast and the Sheriff for everything that they do to, you know, just really bring awareness to domestic violence and stop domestic violence. As you know, I am around in the community. You know, I call this place home. It's paradise to me. But when we have so many people suffering from domestic violence, and I hear, you know, everyone has a story. And so for us to come together and just really, really try to, try to make sure that domestic violence doesn't go on and that everyone understands that our resources at the Family Life Center are free, peer-to-peer, peer-to-peer counseling, we have an emergency shelter, we have support groups, which we are doing virtually every week. So if anybody feels the need or knows anyone that has suffered from domestic violence, we are here to help. And, you know, all our services are, you know, free and confidential. So thank you.
Again, I'm Tammy Sander. I'm the Finance Director at the Family Life Center. And recent statistics indicate that nearly twenty people every minute are assaulted by their intimate partner in the United States. That's one person every three seconds. And we want to thank Sheriff Staley and the Sheriff's Department for all that they've done to combat domestic violence in Flagler County. And just want to make it known to all of the residents here in Flagler County that the Family Life Center is here, as Gary said, with free and confidential services for them. And we know that during the pandemic, especially when we were sheltering in place or safer at home, many victims were stuck at home with their abuser and were unable to reach out for assistance. And the Family Life Center now offers texting to our crisis line, and it's the same number, three eight six four three seven three five zero five. And you can call or text twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and someone, an advocate, will answer your call or text to help you through your crisis. Thank you.
And I just want to recognize both the Family Life Center, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, our first responders who are out in the field responding to calls associated with this. My fear is always the additional stress, financial stress, that we will see through COVID, that that will further exacerbate some domestic violence situations in our community. So do you want to mention quickly all the donations that you are looking for as well? You can't do this alone. This takes our whole community's support to do this. I know paper goods, and as you mentioned, you're open. The center never closes. And so reliant on donations is really, really critical to not only make sure that you're providing everything they need for the families that are housed in the shelter, but really the advocacy that you promote in the community, the education that goes along with that and the partnership. So if you can mention that, I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are always accepting donations for whatever you use in your house, we need in our house, in our shelter. Laundry detergent, toothpaste, shampoo, cleaning products, toilet paper, paper towels. If you use it in your house, we need it in our house. So any, anytime you're at the store, if you're purchasing a cleaning product and want to pick up a second one to donate to Family Life Center, we appreciate that. And you can bring that to our admin outreach office at forty-seven twenty-one East Moody Boulevard in the Amaral Professional Center. I will take this opportunity to let you know that the Family Life Center, along with over four hundred other agencies and programs throughout the state, are facing a significant reduction in our grant funding with the grant that started October one, the Victims of Crime Act Grant for the Family Life Center. That is a fourteen percent cut to our budget. A hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was cut from our victim services budget this year, effective October one. So any monetary donations from our community are always welcome, even if it's five dollars. If all you can afford is five dollars, if a hundred thousand people give five dollars, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So anything that you want to give, you can give through PayPal on our website at FamilyLifeCenterFlagler.org, or you can call us at any time at four three seven 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 four seven. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do, each and every one of you. Thank you.
Now move to agenda item number four, which is a proclamation, October as Hispanic Heritage Month. Vice Mayor Clufus will be presenting. I would ask everyone receiving to please approach the podium.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time for all of us to recognize the culture and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, celebrating with them their history, heritage, traditions, and accomplishments. Whereas the theme for this two thousand and twenty commemoration, Hispanics Be Proud of Your Past and Embrace the Future, invites our Hispanic-American citizens to salute their backgrounds with honor and be proud of where they came from and who they are now. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month traditionally begins from September fifteenth to September eighteenth because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. And whereas, over thirty years, our own Hispanic-American Club of Palm Coast has brought vibrancy, deeply rooted values, and ethics to our city, helping us to pull together in an atmosphere of understanding and goodwill. Whereas our Palm Coast Hispanic community has enriched our city beyond measure with their strength of character and family integrity, serving as role models for our entire community. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and pledge to reinforce our city's commitment to raise awareness for this celebration and to support the unity that Palm Coast's diverse culture advances. Adopted the twentieth day of October, two thousand and twenty, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
This is very exciting for us today. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Sorry. We're here all together in acceptance of this proclamation for the Latino community. As you know, we're very hardworking people, passionate people. We love where we live. We come from different backgrounds. He mentioned some other countries. We have Dominican Republic, we have Cuban behind us, we have Puerto Rico, we have Colombia, I'm sorry. And all these people represent a different business in our community. They're part of the economic growth that's happening. Many of them are expanding. So this is very important for us. We dearly hold this in our hearts that you're recognizing us. We thank you, and we're hoping to continue bringing out the Latino in the forefront of our community and to continue help working with you guys here, making it better.
Thank you. Someone? Just want to again recognize the contribution that you bring to our beautiful city of Palm Coast. The city has a rich, cultural, diverse group of residents that have come from all over the world. So this recognition not only signals the investment that you've made in our community, but I know our residents hopefully will continue to frequent your businesses. That goes back to the Be Local, Buy Local campaign that we're trying to promote so much. We want your businesses to thrive. We need them to be successful. So the more we can share in that, just let us know what we can always do for you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have a presentation of our COVID-19 update. Captain Isconia, will you be presenting? And I know we have Kyle Berry. Okay, all right. Okay. Are you going to do one hybrid, one in council chambers?
I did not realize I could do hybrid.
Yeah, that's okay.
Good to be back in chambers.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thomas Coney, Captain Fire, really don't have a lot. We were able to go back into phase three recently. We reopened city facilities in the beginning of October, which has been very successful for us. Locally, we've had, I was going to lose all my notes. We've had a very flat rate, a growth rate in Flagler County, which has been nice. It's been able to help us keep our schools open. We've, since the beginning of school, there's been reported only thirty-three cases in our school system total. That's including staff and students. In the state, as of this morning, we have seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven cases. In Flagler County, we have nineteen hundred and seventy-one, of which sixteen hundred and five are in Palm Coast. We have had thirty-seven deaths and we're up to a hundred and fifty-nine hospitalizations. Flagler County remains still towards the bottom of the counties with positive rates per one hundred, one thousand capita, which has been fantastic. The one big thing that I would like to continue reiterating is the CDC is still recommending masks and social distancing. So every time we're out in the public, every time we are, we're having our gatherings, continue the ten feet, or six feet social distancing, continue wearing masks. I think that is one of the big drivers on why we have been very successful as a county on keeping our numbers low. That's my update at this point.
Yeah, we have questions or comments, Council?
I just want to basically say that you guys are doing a phenomenal job, the Health Department and you, but I want to thank the most to the people of Flagler County, because without them listening to you, that curve is never going to flatten. So thank you, and thank the people of Flagler County.
I share in that recognition. Again, this takes the entire community and the understanding and the education that we've been able to provide of the severity of COVID-19 and certainly the impacts it has. I too am grateful that things are now reopening, and hopefully that will lessen the impact economically. I'm sure we're going to see some long-term challenges associated with that. However, the first responders have done an exceptional job making sure they're continuing to respond to our residents, but do it safely. And the educational mask campaign and awareness collaboratively with Flagler County and the other municipalities, I think, has helped dramatically and our residents that have been part of this team and part of the solution. So thank you again. I know you've worked tirelessly on this. This is your background. This is what you've been trained in. Never thought in our lifetime we'd see a pandemic. However, it is what we're experiencing, and the reality of it is, is I know everyone is feeling a little bit of COVID fatigue in our community, but we need to continue to remain diligent. We will be resilient. We will come back from this stronger than ever, but we're, we're just got to be focused on every single day, taking the necessary steps.
We continue to work with our local partners, our state partners, and our federal partners daily, weekly on, on this. We have said from the very beginning, this is a marathon, this is not a sprint, and we are still in the middle of this. We're in community spread, it is everywhere. We are expecting more spikes as we get into the winter months, November, December, and again, and probably March, April, we'll see more spikes. So I don't feel like this is going away anytime soon. We need to be diligent. We need to wear masks. We need to do social distancing. We need to continue proper hygiene, and we need to respect each other. And if we do that, we will get through this relatively quicker than later.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now have our presentation of our photo contest awards. I'd ask the winners to please come up to the podium.
We're here to present to you this morning the winners of the two thousand and twenty City of Palm Coast Photo Contest. If you wouldn't mind, I, we have one photo contest winner that wasn't able to be here earlier. Could we take a photo before the presentation?
Sorry.
Come down. You want to come down? We have one photo contest winner that wasn't able to be here before the meeting. Will we be able to take a photo before the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Joyce, yes. Sorry.
Sure you get my good side.
Okay. Thank you again. Each year, we've received so many wonderful submissions that it's never easy to make a decision when selecting the winners. Each winner is, in each category, received one hundred hour gift card and a frame certificate. A big thank you to everyone who participated. We received over two hundred submissions this year. There will be a photo album up on our Facebook page later on today with all of the submissions for everyone to enjoy. Unfortunately, most of the winners were unable to be with us this morning. We have made arrangements to present their certificates to them. So without further delay, we'd like to present this year's winning photos on the screens. That's my neighbor. Wonderful. The categories were for business, technology, nature, dining, historic, and residence. And our first one for business is for the new director of Flagler Auditorium, Amy Fulmer, and the renovated venue, the photographer Lori Vetter-Bowers. For technology, it's the Holiday Boat Parade and the photographer Robin Cowan. For nature, Dear Family, and the photographer Chris Howell.
Beautiful. Beautiful picture.
For dining, Moonrise Brewing Company, and the photographer Joe Goldsberry. For historic, Historic Water Tower, Joyce Connelly.
It's not the water tower.
And for residence, we have Chilling Out. The photographer Joan Twain. Thank you very much and thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, it's what a talent we have right here in our community. So we so appreciate all of the residents that forwarded their entry and it really has captured not only the extraordinary beauty of our community, but all of the rich experiences our residents get to enjoy. So thank you so much for your talents and lending those talents to our community. Thank you. All right.
Yo, by the way.
We will now move to a presentation on employee awards recognition. Oh, Councilmember Cuff.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. A recognition and Renina will be presenting that. Renina on the, okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me this time this morning. Are you able to see my screen?
Not yet, Renina.
Okay. Not sure what's going on with it. I apologize for the delay. Technology.
Story of my life.
Well, I could see it fine.
It's not presenting yet.
Now can you?
We see the PowerPoint, but it's not in presentation mode yet.
Oh, okay. I can't even seem to find it at all on my screen. I apologize.
Are we getting Renina? Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can't even see it myself, so not sure what's going on. I had it ready to go.
That's okay. Take your time. I think Jason went to go get her, correct? Okay.
We sent reinforcements out.
Yeah, I can't, do you see it? See, I can only see this. I don't see anything else.
I'm dragging it over here.
This?
Yep. You have two open, maybe is that part of that?
I don't think so. It always does that.
Are you even getting her? Renina, you can come into council chambers and present if that's easier.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, now put it in presentation mode. Hit that box.
Right here.
Yep. And then it's under your, that one?
This one?
No.
Okay, how's that? Thank you again for allowing me on this morning to share a few remarkable achievements and recognitions our employees have received. Our first slide, our Public Works Department won an award from the American Public Works Association for Video. The contest featured Public Works teams from across the country highlighting the incredible work done on a daily basis in our communities by Public Works Department. Doug will start the video and then we'll turn it over to Director Matt Mansell to elaborate on this amazing accomplishment.
Welcome to the City of Palm Coast. I'm Matt Mansell, the Director of Public Works. Our department provides a full-service operation and I'm here to give you a tour in the day and the life of our team. At the start of each day, 74 hard-working men and women fan out into the city. Their goal is to make our hometown beautiful and bring pride to the residents. We have nine different divisions in Public Works. We like to say, "We lay the groundwork" because our department creates, maintains, and improves the infrastructure of Palm Coast. Our crews maintain all the median landscape throughout 60 square miles of the city. It's the lush greenery and manicured scenery that draws new residents and visitors each year. We even have some cool tools that help us cut grass in grounds more difficult to navigate, like this remote-control lawnmower. We're also unique in that we perform pesticide treatment and manage our own irrigation system. In neighborhoods, our crews mow the vacant lots connected to swales, which are part of the citywide drainage system. They work hand-in-hand with other city departments to maintain them so neighbors can live alongside neatly-kept properties. On top of that, we have a specialized hazard tree crew that removes dead trees as part of storm prep or wildfire mitigation, which are two big prevention measures we take to keep everyone safe and their property protected. The same crew also goes out after a hurricane to clear roads for emergency vehicles. You can find our special projects team working on a number of really cool capital improvement projects. Throughout the summer, they've been regrading the ballfields at the sports complex so local kids have a safe and comfortable grounds to play on this fall. They also construct all-city walking paths and sidewalks. Quality of life is our specialty. Our city facilities are spread out around town. We have a specific crew who manage the landscaping at these spots, providing color and friendly vibes. We also have a team that maintains those buildings. They also set up city events, too. Back here at the department headquarters, our fleet maintenance techs are working to get our heavy equipment, white fleet, and at times even a fire truck back in service. Just across the yard is the sign and signal shop. Our specialists there maintain 9,000 street and directional signs and 58 traffic signals. Since we are located by the Atlantic Coast and are subject to annual hurricanes, one of their most critical signs to manage are the evacuation signs for all emergencies. During the end of summer, hot weather and tropical climate guarantee storm prep. At our yard, we offer residents free sandbags and sand to protect their homes and businesses. Inside our offices, you'll find the Public Works Administration. They manage the day-to-day operations, including budgets, invoicing, and reports. Our entire team is like a family. We strive to do as much work in-house because of the top-notch workmanship of our crews. These men and women lay the groundwork of our future every day. It is an honor to serve the City of Palm Coast. All right, so thank you. We're definitely excited to be chosen as the winners of the Day in the Life of Public Works from the American Public Works Association. I really want to thank our community for supporting your Public Works Department and recognizing them for the hard work and dedication that they bring to bear every day. I also want to thank our comm team for all the professional work they put into creating the video and I'd like to apologize for my very bad acting skills. And I will say that, you know, all of the action shots that were taken are just a sample of what our folks are doing every day and they really deserve the recognition, you know, any recognition that we can get them for the hard work that they do. So we titled this video, "We Lay the Groundwork," and this award is an opportunity for us to highlight those working behind the scenes to keep our community up to the high standards that we have really come to expect. And as always, finally, I'd ask, if you see our crews out there working in your community, if you would, just take a minute to stop and just let them know how much you appreciate all the work that they do every day. So thank you and we are definitely honored for these accolades.
Thank you. Great job. Next, let me go back. Our, the City of Palm Coast won the National Voice of People Award. This award honors local governments based on feedback from residents. This process begins with city council analyzing feedback from citizen survey. They assign to different departments to follow through with specific recommendations and opinions to ensure our residents' voices are heard as they execute the city's strategic action plan. This award is granted to communities that have seen significant increase in favorable ratings in resident response survey results. From 2017 to 19, survey results showed that residents gave higher marks to the city in several areas such as customer and quality of life. Next, we want to recognize one of our employees who's retiring after 15 years of service to the city, Lenny Grocky. Lenny started out working with the Water Distribution Division Construction Crew. Later, he transferred to the Water Distribution Maintenance Team and then was promoted to Customer Service Technician. Lenny has excelled in this role. He has been enthusiastic and is recognized on many occasions for going above and beyond to ensure our citizens are satisfied, happy customers. A big congratulations to Lenny on behalf of the city staff. We want to wish him well as he embarks on the next chapter of his life. Next, we want to recognize some people who've gone above and beyond. Mark Nardone wanted to let, his staff wanted to let him know how much they appreciate him at the fuel station. This was unfamiliar territory for them and his genuine act to help the city team was much appreciated. Marvin Calderon, his team wanted him to know how thankful they are for the amazing protective viters Marvin and his crew installed to keep them safe. Cassandra Garrity, a special thank you to Cassandra for going out of her way to set up and help running the Planning Board Development Review Board. She's a tremendous help in the Community Development Department. Blake Kershaw, he's recognized for his assistance in creating and implementing new ways to streamline the workflow processes. His help in making some internal process more efficient is greatly appreciated. Next, we want to recognize some of our excellent customer service and professionalism. We have several employees that have been recognized for their customer service. These recognitions came to us from contractors, builders, and residents wanting us to know how professional, knowledgeable, polite our employees have been in their interactions in the community. A big thank you to all of these employees. We know they have worked hard for this accomplishment and we truly appreciate their dedication. On behalf of the city manager and all department heads, directors, supervisors, we appreciate everyone's hard work and want to say thank you for being such valuable team members. Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, Mayor.
I just really want to thank each and every individual that was recognized. Just extraordinary video. We have such a talented communications team and we also have the hardest-working public works folks, I think, on the planet that really help keep our community not only as beautiful as it is, but really address some of our infrastructure needs and issues as well. So, and maintenance of all the vehicles and everything they do around the community. And then everyone else that was recognized, just I'm incredibly proud of the City of Palm Coast organization, its team members, all of the employees, and then certainly those that have been recognized today. So keep up the great work. Thank you. Okay, we will move to agenda item number eight, which is a presentation of Intercoastal Waterway Cleanup Event Results. Jordan Myers will be presenting.
Presentation, excuse me, missing from the folder. We're trying to find it.
Oh, okay. If you want, we can move to a different agenda item and then you can present following that? Would that help?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. We'll now move to agenda item number nine, which is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services. Helena will be presenting and I see our sheriff is here today, so please come up and feel free to add anything to the presentation. Helena?
Hi, good morning, Mayor, City Council. During the fiscal year 2021 budget process, council allocated funds for two additional deputies in the law enforcement contract with our sheriff's office. There is an additional deputy being funded through an agreement with the Town Center CDD that is currently being drafted and will be brought to council at a later date. The amendment for your approval today includes those proposed changes. The total cost of two additional deputies for nine months is $172,058 or $86,029 each and the deputy to be funded through the CDD comes at a cost of $114,075. At this point, I'll take questions from council.
Council, do we have any questions or comments at this time?
Nothing at this point.
Sheriff, welcome. If you would like to state anything for the record, I know this is about the two deputies today and the pass-through through the town center and then we have two hopefully additional deputies coming, you know, once we get more concrete numbers, if we can expedite that, that's what we have stated as a council we will do. So, welcome.
So, Mayor, Flagler County Sheriff Rick Staley, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for these additional positions. And also want to highlight the partnership between the sheriff's office, the City of Palm Coast, and the Town Center CDD in a public-private partnership to fund a dedicated deputy in town center with the growth that is occurring there. And you see these public-private partnerships across the country and in Florida, but this really is the first time we've done one in Flagler County in the City of Palm Coast. So, you know, that's the business community coming together, recognizing the need to support the community along with the City of Palm Coast. So, you know, it's a great, it's a great partnership and I appreciate that. I do look forward in my budget request this year to the council, you, was included a study that was done by the University of North Florida on the deficit deputies and the growth deputies projected for the sheriff's office. So I believe that come January-ish, somewhere in there, there will be a joint workshop between the City of Palm Coast and the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that we can really take a long-term look at how do we fund law enforcement in the City of Palm Coast and in Flagler County in a joint partnership that's fair to everybody that starts whittling away at what's been identified as deficit deputies and deputies needed caused by growth. And this study was, was really done at the request of this commission, specifically Councilman Bob Cuff, if you recall, I think, a year and a half ago, when he brought up, well, how do we know how many we need? So, Councilman Cuff, we delivered that answer for you and I look forward to us all getting together. Of course, I think he'll be off the council by then, but, so I guess that's your last shot before you run, but that we'll have to deal with.
Just for the record, I'm not running, so that's.
So he's dropping the solution in our lungs as he's fleeing.
Hey, mission accomplished.
Leave it to an attorney.
Well, and I just. Well, and I just want to add as well, thank you really for the hard work of your entire organization, the men and women that sacrifice their lives every single day when they're out there. You know, it's an extraordinary gift that we have, that type of dedication in our community. Thanks to your efforts over the last four years, obviously, a significant crime reduction, safer neighborhoods, that our residents feel that way. We have to keep the momentum going. We cannot, not recognize that public safety is a top priority in this community and needs to remain so. So, it's not an easy job, and I know there's a lot of stress involved with it, so we really appreciate the efforts and anything we can do in partnership with that. I look forward to the conversation in January with the county commission, look forward to, you know, your input on really how you continue to look for ways to keep our community safe. So, thank you.
Sheriff, I'll make your words my words, and I'd like to add something very, very simple. Part of our job over here is to allow money to be spent. No better spent money, it's the one that we spend when the department adds on to your control, sir. Thank you for your service, stay alert, stay alive.
May I add something?
Yes.
Sheriff, I just wanted to say thank you for two things. One, the statistics for which crime has been reduced over the last four years is significant, but in addition to that, something that's just as important to all of us on the council is how the public perceives their public safety in our neighborhoods, and we have shown through our own statistic gathering that people feel safer today than they have in 2017, and that's really critical to us because it's reinforcement and it shows the great partnership that Palm Coast and the Flagler County Sheriff's Office has, but also your extent into the neighborhoods to make sure that everyone knows that proper policing is occurring. So, thank you.
Welcome.
And, and we really do want to recognize the private partnership with the town center. We are, we are growing. We are seeing growth for the first time in 10 years, and I know that has impacted, again, your organization for the demand of services. So, we definitely want to make sure, you know, we're recognizing them that stepped up and has made this investment as well.
So, in closing, if I could just say that, you know, this is a great start. We really appreciate the partnership. It's, but I want to recognize the men and women that serve you on a day-to-day basis. You know, I set the vision, I might set the tone of the agency, but they're out delivering, and they're, they're the ones implementing the vision, and, and they delivered a 47% crime reduction in three and three-quarter years to this community, which is unheard of. You had a presentation earlier about COVID-19. Fortunately, we haven't had this in our agency, but there have been more COVID-19-related deaths in law enforcement this year across the country and even in Florida than those killed in the line of duty because they're out there serving, which puts them at risk, not for a gun battle, if you will, but for an invisible enemy, and unfortunately, a lot have contracted them across the country. So, we want to remember them too.
That's true.
Absolutely.
I lost a good 20 friends, just in New Jersey alone, law enforcers, at least 20, at least.
Well, thank you again. Keep up the great work. Thank you so much. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion in a second, and then I'll open up to public...
I'll make that motion gladly.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Open up to the public, any member of the public wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please do so at this time. This is an adoption of the Sheriff Office Law Enforcement Services Agreement. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Brancuino?
Honorable, yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nets?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. Are we ready for the presentation? Okay, wonderful. Presentation of the 2020 Intercosta Waterway Cleanup Event.
Morning, Mayor, City Council. Sorry for the delay. So, my name's Jordan Myers, I'm the environmental planning technician here at the city. I also am one of the event organizers for the waterway cleanup. We were very fortunate to be able to have our waterway cleanup this year. We did have to make some modifications due to COVID-19, but the participation we got from our citizens was still amazing, and we were really happy that we were able to give them somewhat of our normal waterway cleanup event. So, the waterway cleanup is part of Strategic Action Plan, Objective 5.1, Enhance Community and Visitors' Recreational Opportunities and Experiences at Community Events. This day, this year, we had the event on September 12th. Our citizens could clean up anywhere, saltwater canals, the intercoastal waterway, parks, trails, and then we were able to expand awareness for keeping our community clean and beautiful. And it's typically conjunct, conducted in conjunction with International Coastal Cleanup Day, which is also in the month of September. So, we did, like I said, have to make some event modifications due to COVID-19. There was no gathering at the community center after our citizens went out and cleaned. Unfortunately, we wanted to make sure that everyone kept a safe distance, so there was no event meeting. And then with supply pickup, we did a drive-by pickup, so citizens would come, drive up to the community center, because it was still closed, they couldn't amend the building. They would call the front desk, and staff would bring their supplies out to them, put them in their trunk, close the trunk, and they would be on their way. So, it was completely contactless. We were able to keep both staff and citizens safe while still giving them their supplies that they needed for waterway cleanup. And we got a lot of support from it. People were very happy that they were still able to participate in the event. That way, we still gave everyone their awesome shirts that they love and bags for this year. And they were able to submit their most unique find entries via the city website, and staff was able to review them using Palm Coast Connect. So, these have been our past mascots over the years. And this year, actually, the employees got to pick and name the mascot, which is something they haven't been able to do before, so I was really happy that I was able to involve the employees in this one. We got 164 votes. Third place was Ollie, second place was Harry Otter, and Sir Otterton was our winning with 50 votes. And we had quite a few social media posts leading up to the day, some fun facts. And we still got our grant from the Florida Inland Navigation District. We've been our partner for 13 years, the entire length of the intercoastal cleanups. We want to thank them for continuing to support our event. And there's some pictures that were submitted for our volunteers. And so, we did have a most unique find and a most trash collected. The most trash collected was by a Boy Scout and Girl Scout troop who combined their forces to pick up a lot of trash. And then our winner was this picture of a bunch of glass jugs that they found. So, they did win the most unique find contest, and that was Gina Mullen and her son. Our stats for this year, 150 people registered and 515 pounds of trash collected. So, you can see it's a little bit lower, but that was to be expected. I was honestly very happy that we still had 150 people who wanted to participate in the event. And then we've already planned for having the event next year on September 4th. These are our mascot ideas for next year. That's it.
Wow, thank you so much to, to all the volunteers, to, obviously, your efforts and many more. Again, mentioning our communications team who captured the event and certainly promoted it, and Councilmember Nets, who serves on the Florida In navigational district as well as our representative. Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Find is happy to partner with cities and communities to maintain the intercoastal waterway as a beautiful recreational and commercial waterway.
Well, thank you for your continued commitment and help in that. So, wonderful. Thank you again, and thank you once again to our community, I know, who stepped up. Great job.
I expect just as creative mascot names next year. I was surprised Harry Otter didn't win, I'm sure.
Yeah, our mascot was designed in-house by our communications team, so it was awesome.
Awesome, yeah, very cool.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jordan. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is a resolution approving a master service agreement with Joe Dirt Incorporated for liquid lime sludge removal, hauling, and disposal. Pete and Steve are going to be presenting.
I'm there, and counsel, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, this is, let me start off with the subject. It's a resolution approving a master services agreement with Joe Dirt Incorporated for liquid lime sludge removal, hauling, and disposal from water treatment plant number one. And I'll read you the background. As a part of the city council's goals and priorities to make all infrastructure a priority regarding maintenance and performance, the city's utility department, water treatment plant number one, located at 4th North Carpet Drive in Palm Coast, generates lime sludge on a daily basis that needs to be removed, hauled, and disposed of from the sludge thickener. The process of removing liquid sludge directly from the sludge thickener will allow the sludge in the lagoon to dry quicker. The drying time is a critical factor and is often based on climate factors as well as applying the wet sludge to the lagoon while sludge is trying to dry. City staff advertised removal, hauling, and disposal of liquid lime sludge in accordance with the city's purchasing policy. The city received several bids, but one was responsive and responsible. The project bid overview and notice to attend to award are attached. City recommends city council to approve a master services agreement with Joe Dirt Incorporated for the removal, hauling, and disposal of the lime sludge. The contract will be one-year with two-year renewals. The services will be provided on an as-needed basis. City staff will purchase items on a as-needed basis using budgeted funds appropriated by city council. The fiscal year 2021 budget includes $375,000 within utilities' operation to purchase these services.
Thank you so much. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for either Pete or Steve? Seeing that, I'll open up to the public, any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number 10, please do so at this time. Thank you so much, Doug. I will take it back to this council and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Brancuino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Nets?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 11, which is a resolution approval of expenses in a not-to-exceed amount of $130,000 for public works site analysis. Carl will be presenting.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Carl Cody, Director of Stonewater Engineering Department. I'm here to follow up from our presentation at the workshop last week. The public works facility is a project that is currently underway with design. We have a, a construction management team and a design team currently working on that project. We had a master plan that was completed a few years ago, and as part of our design process was to update and validate the master plan during that, that time and collecting the information, we identified, you know, a need to explore additional acreage to be able to serve the city's future needs. As part of that process, we identified some adjacent property in the area of the existing site, as well as property, other property that the city currently owns that could be utilized. We did some exploratory analysis, looking at what was feasible in terms of land swap, if there are interested parties for vacant lands, and then some initial exploring indicating that, yes, these are viable options to move forward with. So, we're really at the next step in that process where we need to collect some data in terms of wetlands, quality of wetlands, floodplain analysis, so we can allocate and identify the cost implications of those options. So, we can then collect the data, put together some reports and information, and come back to council in the end of January, early February timeframe with a full report on the analysis, so council will have information to make a decision on how and where to proceed with this particular project. So, that I'm here today is really to approve expenses with various subconsultants that are going to be needed to collect data and perform some onsite analysis and some modeling and other efforts. So, here to answer any questions or go into anything else in more detail if you would like.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Just to say that sometimes we have to look ahead at things, and we have to spend in order to save, and I think that's what we're doing by allowing this money to be allocated to you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that. This is money well-spent to make sure that we're making the right decision, and I trust Carl and his team to do that.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number 11? Please do so at this time.
Bob, did you raise your hand?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you.
No, no problem. That's what you get for not being there. Yeah, just one question to Carl. Option B contingency, why, I mean, I, I support what the other council members have just said, but why is the option B contingency higher than option A, and actually, higher than the expenses that we're approving to look at option B?
That, that would be if we, we come to find out that option A is not a feasible site, where maybe the floodplains can't be impacted, or we can't find lands to compensate for them. We will then need to spend some efforts on doing some appraisals to maybe buy some additional property to, next to option B, and to do some site layouts and more configuration, because we really didn't look at that. So, it's really if we need to push option B and a further analysis.
Okay. That's, that's my only question. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we see anyone calling in? Okay, thank you so much. Roll, a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Brancuino?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nets?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12 is a resolution approving a work order with LTG Incorporated to provide engineering design services for Seminole Woods Boulevard Streetlight Design Project. Carl?
Yes, this project is part of our overall continuous streetlight master plan. Just to give you some feedback on our current projects that are out there, we, right now, we have on Belt Air the streetlights that are going up. There are some sections that have been put up and are lit. The first segment is from the library down to Pine Lakes Parkway. They are continuing installing lights. They'll get to 100, but the, the light poles are pretty much in place down to White View. And the segment from Pine Lakes to Park View is ready to get lit up. They're waiting on some Transformers, FPL is at this point, and they're waiting on some additional materials of poles and lightheads to, to arrive to continue that installation. So, that's an ongoing program. They're, they're here, making great progress with that particular project. We have some, some other projects in FPL's hopper right now. Ravenwood Drive is one of those. We're waiting for the review to be completed and agreements that will be executed, so that can get in their construction schedule timeline. Seminole Woods is one of the upcoming projects that will then go to FPL. We have Lassiter, who has done some previous designs on those projects that we, I just mentioned. They will put together the engineering, they'll work with FPL on how to feed the, the power to them and make sure the photometrics are proper and the poles are located in, in, outside the clear zones and meet all of FPL's requirements. So, this here is a, a work order to conduct that engineering, design, work for Seminole Woods. That's almost a five-mile stretch of roadway. It'll go from 100 all the way to US 1. And again, the same process will occur. We'll coordinate with FPL upfront, we'll complete the design, FPL will sign off on it, and then it'll go through them to execute agreements and then get placed in their construction schedule. So, this is to seek approval from council, to expend dollars to complete the design of that next project.
Thank you so much, Counsel. Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Just, Carl, we're, we're still, you have regular meetings with FPNL, correct?
Yeah, we, we do have, there's various representatives from FPL that we meet with on a, not a set schedule, but we're trying to get something that is, is more, more frequent.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's important our residents understand that... Yeah, I mean, I, it's important our residents understand that, you know, we control our investment in the streetlights, but we don't necessarily control, uh, when they're, go up. Um, and, uh, that's in partnership with our private utility provider, FPNL. So I think we do our part, and we, we're trying to communicate as often as possible. So, um, thank you for that effort.
Right, and we do work well with them, and, and recently with even the hurricanes over in the Gulf, you know, there's been a displacement of some materials. Um, so they, you know, there's other things that happen outside our area that impact FPL's schedule as well, where they aren't receiving materials or they're sharing their materials to areas that are in, in a higher priority and a, a bigger need.
Yeah, very, very important to note, so, um, okay, council, uh, I will open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number twelve? Entertain a motion on this agenda item?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Mayor Nettz?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Nettz. Mayor Holland?
Yes, thank you.
I got promoted.
Item number thirteen is a resolution approving a Florida Inland Navigation District Waterways Assistance Program project agreement for the Waterfront Park One construction.
Yes, uh, good morning again, council. I'm pleased to announce that the city has been awarded a grant agreement with FIND for some improvements at Waterfront Park. Um, early in the spring, a presentation was made to council to apply for this grant with FIND. Um, it is to provide waterway access at Waterfront Park. Um, as, there has been some updates since what was presented to council. At the time, we hadn't completed all of our design, and we've done some additional, uh, survey work. Um, so the cost of the project went up a little bit. There's a, uh, some additional dredging, or the quantity of the dredging had increased from what was originally anticipated, and we did some due diligence on costing out that work. Um, however, the, this project, we're looking at going, uh, seeking a multi-year funding grant with FIND. They do allow multi-year grants on larger projects and especially with counties who have reduced revenue, um, overall compared to the other counties. So we broke the project out into three areas, and we, we plan on submitting each year over a period of three years. FIND does indicate that there is no guarantee that future years will be funded, even though you receive the first year of funding. Um, they have a limited amount of money based on the revenues that they collect. A portion goes back to the county. There are two projects this year that received funding. The county received some funding for a project that Bing's landing, and the city received funding for the initial, uh, year one for improvements at Waterfront Park. So this is, is great news. Um, we, we have some dollars here. I believe it's a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in this first phase of the agreement. Um, moving forward, we will continue, come back to council in the spring to, uh, process a resolution to move forward with the next year's application for part two of this project.
But do we approach TDC at all for the capital dollars? Um, I know that's how they were able to, um, successfully build out the phases up at Marineland for their Marina. Um, they match those dollars with FIND dollars, uh, local match, and then, um, use TDC as well.
Sure, Mayor. Uh, Lauren Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, I can reach out to Amy Lou Kosik. We haven't approached her for this, um, but I can certainly do that. Um, I am here to just kind of piggyback on some good news with the FIND grant. We're also expanding our partnership with the Palm Coast Rowing Club and putting together a MOU to bring to this council in the spring. Um, they're aligning their own strategic plan and future growth of rowing programs here in Palm Coast. Um, and with this access to Waterfront Park, they're hoping to expand in that facility as well. Uh, so we, um, the Palm Coast Rowing Club and the Recreation Department will be bringing you a MOU, um, sometime this spring with the alignment of this grant. And I will certainly reach out to Amy.
Yeah, if you could, uh, you know, because I know, uh, that would be match also. Um, so I think if we could match the, the FIND dollars to this project and maximize it, it might even advance phase one even further, um, and, uh, add to this amenity that we're building.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. And let me know if you need any help.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, so council, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Just one comment. One of the earlier presentations, uh, talking about the waterway cleanup, we mentioned that the ci- city had received sixty-five thousand dollars from FIND over a thirteen-year period. I think it's also worthwhile to note that Flagler County and its municipalities has received over three million dollars in grants since I've been serving on FIND.
Yeah, that's extraordinary. Well, it's about time those dollars that our taxpayers pay comes back and builds additional infrastructure needs on the waterway.
That's, FIND's mission would have created by the Florida Legislature in nineteen twenty-three, public access to public waters. That's what FIND is supposed to do.
Well, we know our, our boaters and kayakers and, you know, everyone who gets to enjoy the waterway will certainly appreciate this project as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, okay, I will open up to the public. Any member of the public? Oh, Councilmember Cuff. I don't, does he wave his hands? Okay, okay, sorry.
Thanks rapidly.
No, my, my only comment was if the, uh, if the water access parking is, appears to be the last phase, um, we really do need to search for opportunities for other partnerships and also with FIND to make sure this is completed. Uh, I think this is a great program, uh, great facility, um, but without the, uh, nearby place to load and unload kayaks and canoes and so forth, um, I don't think it will be used as much as I'm sure the public would like to use it. You know, I'm thinking of the, uh, trail down Longs Creek that, you know, you practically have to bring your own train to, uh, get your kayak from the parking lot to the launching point. And once you do, it's well worth the effort, but I think that, I think that facility is probably underused because of that logistics problem. And, uh, I'd, I'd hate to see this one suffer from the same, uh, the same problem, um, even though I know we've got that paved path over to the parking lot, which would make it a shorter and easier walk to the floating docks that we're talking about here.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Doug, did you say anyone was calling in for a public comment? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nettz?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl and Lauren. Great job. Um, we'll now move to the consent agenda. Um, any member of the public wish to make public comment on either fourteen or fifteen? Please do so at this time. Close public comment. Ask for approval of the consent agenda as read.
Move to approve the consent agenda as read. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nettz?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment? Um, not chosen to do so at the beginning of the meeting. This is your opportunity. We will close public comment. And we'll move to discussion by city council matters, not on the agenda. We'll start with our Vice Mayor Clufus, who's here today.
I have nothing for today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Branquino?
Just wanted to thank the, the, the award winners, Voice of the People, Lanny Gorki, uh, Above and Behind, Mark, Marvin, Cassandra, and Blake, Customer Service Award, Tom, Dan, Jean, Chris, Irma, and Kevin. The American Public Works Award, uh, to the, our proud Public Works, and Matthew Mansell. You don't have to act. You're a natural. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettz?
Nothing.
Councilmember Cuff?
Um, other than to echo what, uh, Councilmember Branquino just said, I was listening to the, I've read the agenda item and was listening to the presentation, and I really hope that the residents, uh, of the city appreciate, uh, the folks that, uh, you know, the behind-the-scenes is a cliche, but we have so many people that work so hard to make this, uh, a great place to live and, uh, don't really get any credit for doing that. They're just doing their jobs, but I do think it's important that we recognize them and thank them when we have the opportunity.
Okay, great. And I have nothing. Um, discussion by city attorney matters.
Mayor, council, I'm going to go ahead and address an issue. I believe that you all, the city managers are not available to, to handle this, but it is something that, from a time standpoint, it's important. Uh, you may remember at the last council meeting, you, you passed a procedure. It was a resolution creating a procedure for the bid protest. Uh, that is moving forward. Um, all the, all the necessary steps have occurred to, to, to get ready, uh, for that process. Ultimately, it will come back. Uh, the decision of the hearing officer will come back to this council for the final decision consistent with your purchasing policies and with your code. Um, uh, from a time standpoint, uh, it may be necessary for their, for the city clerk, uh, to advise you and to call a special meeting. We don't know that that's necessary, but we do want to at least make sure that was not specifically provided for in the process of the last resolution. So as my understanding that you all were provided a resol- have, have not been provided?
No, we were going to propose it today.
Okay. There's a resolution that, uh, will, will simply amend the, I think it's coming up at this time. I apologize, this was, I wouldn't plan on this, so. Um, uh, that, we'll, we'll simply amend, uh, one section of this prior resolution to allow, uh, the city clerk, if and as necessary, to call a special meeting, um, for this council to simply consider the recommended order of the hearing officer. The hearing officer will be doing, uh, the quasi-judicial matter. That's not changing. It's just a matter of, of how, um, what, what, uh, what meeting schedule, um, may be necessary. We're hoping to be able to do this at the, at the next regular, uh, business meeting, but if not, from a timing standpoint, uh, that was, uh, requested that, uh, the resolution be amended, uh, to allow the clerk, in her discretion, to, uh, request, uh, a special meeting.
Uh, and, and our rules and procedures state the mayor actually calls the special meeting, so it's not the clerk that does that.
Okay, the resolution will so, will, will so provide.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all?
That is all.
Okay. Um, Helena, I'm going to ask you, do you have anything to report for September twenty-twenty emergency and sole source purchases?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. Uh, we do have our September twenty-twenty, uh, emergency purchases and sole source purchases. It's quite a lengthy list. Um, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars for Shenandoah General Construction LLC for emergency work related to the Seminole Woods pipe repair. There is eighty-four hundred and eighty-four dollars and, and in tax, USA Inc., Cyclor reducer unit for centrifuge. Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents to Uline for traffic barriers. Now for sole sources, we have sixty-two hundred and fifty-six dollars Xylem Water Solutions for pump replacement, twelve thousand five hundred and twelve dollars for Xylem Water Solutions, also for, uh, pump replacements, seven thousand dollars Ignition Point Training LLC for fire specialized training classes, eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars for AWC Inc. for real-time alarm system, four thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars Fluid Control Specialties Inc. for repair a ro- rotor valve actuator, seven thousand five hundred Andrew King Mobile Welding for labeling materials to rebuild soffit on the office, three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars FJ Nugent and Associates for repair of submersible pump, one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars ESRI for, uh, drone to map for Arc GIS online license, nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for Andritz Separation Inc. for field service, and fourteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars for Geograph Technologies LLC, uh, for ESRI, Arc GIS add-on, uh, to help with the fiber network. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Helena, for that update and report. I certainly appreciate it.
Mayor, I have one more thing, um, at the request of the council, um, to make a decision. Um, we have no business to bring forth November third, two thousand twenty-twenty. Would you like to cancel that meeting?
I, if we have nothing, I think that would make sense. Anyone object to that?
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you so much, Virginia.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one. I believe that, that the, uh, we were looking for action on, on the resolution that I was discussing.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Sorry to be a pest, but.
No, that's okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move to.
So move.
Seconded.